Good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 9th Davidson County Board of Commissioner meeting to order. And tonight it's my honor to lead you in the invocation and the pledge. If you will, bow with me. It's often my need to seek counsel, and often when I do, I think of the 23rd Psalm. So tonight, I'd like to read the 23rd Psalm with you. "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures. He leadeth me beside the still waters; he restoreth my soul. He leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for his name's sake; yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thou rod and thy staff, they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of mine enemies; thou anointest my head with oil; my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I shall dwell in the house of the Lord forever." Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize this large audience tonight. Thank you for being here, staff members, et cetera, for being with us tonight, taking interest in our government. Our council of chambers representative tonight is Dr. Kate Gentry, and I don't believe I've seen Dr. Gentry come in, but I would like to recognize her as the Thomasville Area Chamber of Commerce Council of Chambers representative. She, of course, is also the Thomasville School We have begun to recognize veterans on a regular basis, and I'd like, let me say this before you stand, I'd like to recognize veterans tonight and ask them to stand, and if they have not received one of our veterans pins, please come up and Commissioner McClure will hand you one. Thank you for your service.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
We would like to recognize, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith, we would like to recognize Joel Hartley tonight for a special recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will ask Joel to come forward. For those of you that don't know, Joel Hartley is our Information Systems Department Director this fall at the North Carolina Local Government Information Systems Association, and that's NC, LGICA for short. Joel was recognized as the IT Professional of the Year of 2021. So, and I'll just read the sentence out of the agenda, I'm not sure if you've got it, because I think it says it all. Mr. Hartley was recognized for this based on his demonstrated strong work ethic, servant-hood, or servant-hood, leadership, honesty, and integrity in all that he does for Davidson County. Those of you all that know Joel, been here a long time, he's served his county very well. You couldn't find a better person to have as an IT Director in North Carolina. So, tonight we're recognizing Joel Hartley.
This is not the first year, is it?
I think it is.
Well, he gets something about every year, though, doesn't he?
As a group.
As a group.
Okay.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. One more. That way I make sure I don't have to eye shut. One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations, Joel.
I must give you a nod. She, Madam Chair, Joel, real quick. So, I had the opportunity to work in a different county with an IT department, and, you know, any time that your name is mentioned, they've called you the Godfather. Anytime that this individual represents Davidson County, either at the UNC School of Government in Chapel Hill, helping other counties get through ransomware attacks, or trying to show other counties how to beef up their critical infrastructure, this man's always at the table. So, it is an absolute honor of mine to have you on our staff, to have you as a friend, and have, being able to work around with you and see you in operation for over the last 21 years. So, I just want to tell you, nobody is more deserving than you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
We have another recognition of our county manager, Casey Smith. Turn it over to our clerk, Debbie Harris.
Mr. Smith has recently received his credentialed manager designation from the ICMA, and that is the International City and County Management Association. He's worked very hard to gain this accreditation. It's a big deal. There's 1,300 local government management professionals currently credentialed through the voluntary credentialing program, and its mission is to advance professional local governments through leadership, management, innovation, and ethics, and by increasing the proficiency of appointed chief administrative officers, assistants, administrators, and other employees who serve local governments. There are members in over 27 countries. He is definitely among an elite group of folks, and they, he had to have a significant experience as a senior management executive, have earned a degree. He's done a lot of work in the past, over the past year or two, to get this credentialing. I know he's worked very hard, and I'm really proud to say that he's finally done it, and I know he's proud of himself. So, he deserves to be recognized for this big honor.
A lot of homework. It takes a lot of behind-the-scenes homework to keep the good, this is the highest honor my professional organization can give to me.
That's awesome.
Since we got recognizing, and they had us provisional at first, and so they removed the provisional title recently.
Fantastic.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, make them stand up and do a picture.
I think we should.
Man, getting out of there.
Yeah, before I moved to that, I don't want to dampen the mood, but I would be remiss if I didn't use, can I use just a minute or so?
Absolutely.
We lost two members of our Davidson County employee family this week, and I just want to get that out there. Ruth Honeycutt, my heart goes out to the Honeycutt family. She was our elections director for almost 40 years in this county. So, if there was an election, she presided over it officially in this county. We lost her this week. Again, my heart goes out, I know you all as well, to the Honeycutt family. And then recently we just, our former county manager used to sit in his seat, Zev Hanner, his father, Big Zev Hanner, as they like to say, I guess, he used to work for us for years, transportation, I think recently passed away as well. So, our heart goes out to the Hanner family and the Honeycutt family, and I just wanted to have a moment to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen.
Who you serving?
Yeah, I just.
There's no extra money, Casey.
There's no extra money? Commissioner Shores, could you move to in between Commissioner Watford and Commissioner McClure?
I don't know.
That's fine. Is that good?
Okay, now I got, I got. Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Casey.
I don't know.
That's right.
Can't turn our master clerk while I talk.
Okay, if you have not done so, please register if you're interested in speaking at public address. Due to the anticipated length of the public hearings, I'm requesting that they be moved to follow the deliberation portion of the agenda. Commissioner Shores has asked to pull item number 9C from the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Hearing none, Madam Chair. I make a motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioners Shores and Elliott. Please cast your vote.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, 9C.
Was there a, was there a public hearing that was going to be pulled as well?
We have to go through the formality, sir.
Yeah, they have to go through the formality for that.
We are, we are.
Oh, cast your vote.
Commissioner McClure and Commissioner Schell, can I have your votes, please?
Commissioner Schell, Commissioner Schell's working on it.
I got him. Okay. All of the votes are in and that motion carries by a vote of 7-0.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, is anyone registered to speak?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Looks like we have five folks tied up tonight.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call on Tripp Kester.
Good evening, Commissioners. I guess the first thing, I want to say it's refreshing to me to see how y'all are demonstrating a healthy respect, not only for the Word of God and opening your procedures here, but the respect you're affording the citizens of this county. That's something that a lot of us have not been afforded in a lot of other meetings here of late. And I just want to say, when I look around this county, I'm seeing an exponential increase in anger, frustration, and dissatisfaction on behalf of citizens with regards to their elected officials. And a lot of these feelings that these people are expressing to me stem from an arrogant indifference that they're receiving on behalf of these very same elected officials with regards to their constituents. I've experienced this arrogance and indifference firsthand for months now at these Board of Education meetings. And the thing that really burns me up, I'm a sworn law enforcement officer for 10 years. I'm a public servant, just like you guys are. I've sworn an oath to defend the Constitution and protect people's constitutional liberties. And for months now, I'm systematically seeing these liberties just trampled all over, and it just really burns me up. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of seeing illegal mandates that aren't law being stuffed down people's throat. I'm tired of seeing these officials on the school board allowing pornography in the schools, and then trying to cover it up, and this, that, and another. I'm just fed up, and I think I can, I can speak for a lot of the people in this room, we're at the point where I know the ultimate, this might not even be the right venue to seek a remedy. But I'm just here out of frustration, anger, and desperation, because I know the ultimate remedy is to vote these folks out, which is what I fully intend to get involved in doing and encouraging other people to do. But in the meantime, I can't just sit idly by as a sworn officer and allow people's rights to be trampled on. And I'm just here to seek a remedy, to see, I know y'all control a lot of funding for the county, and if there's any way, I'm just putting it before you tonight, if there's any way that any resources can be withheld from this crowd on the Board of Education to try to rein them into where they can regain a rebirth of reality and realize they swore the same oath I did, they're not to trample on people's rights, they're to defend and protect people's rights, and realize that these parents that are being kicked out of meetings and not even allowed entrance to a public school because of an illegal mandate, because they won't put a rag on their face, it is ridiculous. And I'm sick of it, and I know a lot of other people are. And we're just here out of frustration to ask for y'all's help to maybe attend some of these meetings, to see firsthand for yourselves the arrogance with which people in this county are being treated. And I think if y'all saw that, you'd be as upset and angry as we are, and that's what I'm here before you tonight, to just ask for you to sincerely consider that, to maybe attend some of these things and get involved and do what you can do on your side of the aisle to try to bring some assistance to the people of this county. And I just thank in advance for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Matt Ash Paul.
You did good last week with it.
I didn't do so well tonight. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Paul.
Last fall.
Right.
Commissioners, thank you guys for, let me start by thanking you for the way you guys opened this meeting. Pretty much gonna say about the same thing that Tripp just said. It's wonderful to come to a government meeting where you're welcomed, where you're not feel like you're in fear of your life and threatened. It's also wonderful to come here and hear God's word at the start of a meeting. If you go to a school board meeting, all they want to do is just have a moment of silence, and I don't know if anybody's praying, I don't know what they're praying for, and I don't know who they're praying to. So, thank you guys for how you start. But I'm a little bit disappointed in you guys. I wanted to come here tonight, look every single one of you in the eyes, and just tell you that straight up. Because two weeks ago, I came here and shared with you concerning, challenging things that are going on that we're dealing with in our school system, that we're dealing with our superintendent, and that we're dealing with with the Board of Education, and I asked you to come to the November meeting. And if you were there, please tell me, because I looked at the room real hard, but I didn't see one of you there. Seven county commissioners, the meeting was last Monday night for our school board meeting. It was three or four miles down the road, and I know you guys might be busy, but it's hard to believe that one or two of my county commissioners couldn't be there to see how we're treated. Our constitutional rights are being absolutely stripped away from us. And apparently, our teachers don't even know it. I have a ninth grader at Oak Grove High School, and his world history teacher a month ago taught him our incorrect form of government. So, I want to just go on the record right now and say, we live in a constitutional republic. That is our form of government. And what that means is there is no law above the Constitution. If you've read the First Amendment recently, among other things, there are two things we're afforded, the right to peacefully assemble and the right to petition our government. That's what everybody's doing here tonight. That's what I'm doing here tonight. That's what people have been trying to do at our school board since August, and people have been denied their right because they're not willing to put a mask on. It is illegal, it is unconstitutional. A superintendent, a school board, a governor, a president does not have the right to take away our constitutional rights. And I'm fed up. You know, I'm as frustrated as I've been with anything. I've never been involved in local politics until August, and what I've seen in our school board is absolutely disgusting. And so, I don't know what you guys can do, but I'm coming here and I'm asking you again to do something. I know last week, you guys were asked to vote on two things tonight. I'm going to ask you again to do it. Number one, to take a vote in any way, shape, or form to withhold funds from our school board until they start acting right and until they get rid of this mask mandate. And the second thing is to take a vote of no confidence in our superintendent. She's been acting disrespectful, she has been acting illegal and unconstitutional. And as Pastor Beatty shared at the last school board meeting, to know that under her watch, we've allowed illegal, illicit pornographic material in our schools is absolutely unacceptable. I'll call it filth, just like Mark Robinson. If sin is sin, wrong is wrong, and it needs to be righted. I'm asking you guys to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. We would ask that you remain quiet so the next person can come forward. Thank you. Don Ash.
Gentle lady and gentleman, I'm starting to feel like I'm at home. So, I'm not fearful like I used to be. I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, but I was one of those parents that was locked out. And just to let you know, I didn't even get in to see what the board was saying, because I wouldn't be allowed. But while I was standing outside with 32 other parents locked out, I proceeded to read the duties and responsibilities of the school board. I got them back. I read all the responsibilities out there out loud to those parents that weren't allowed to come in and speak for the children. So, nothing in this says that they can indoctrinate our students or do socialism or communism. No mandates and no masks. We do need board members with backbone, a canary in the coal mine, whistleblowers to stand up and tell the parents, the community, the truth, protect our kids. And I have been here, and you've been gracious to me, and I do feel at home. I feel like I'm in America when I come in. But I am asking you, as Commissioners, stand today, to stand for the children so they can breathe, and it does not cost you anything. You don't have to buy a ticket for it. Please vote. Stand for them to remove the mask. Mask is slavery. It's modern-day slavery. If you refuse to stand for the children, which won't cost you anything, if you refuse to stand with and for the parents, you're not being asked to build an ark. God is just looking for you to stand, for His bride to stand. A lot of us are standing, and we're part of God's bride. If you refuse to stand for the children, you do not deserve your seat. And I hate to say it like that, but that's the mommy voice in me. I ask that you resign your position today. We are not giving up our birthright, and that's what's being demanded of us, to cower down so somebody can take this nation away from us. Too many men have died, too many women have served. Our children are suffering. We will not surrender our inheritance. America belongs to Jehovah God, and I ask you to really stand for the children. And I thank you for allowing me to speak, but I'll be back. I'm the granny that's not going away until you stand. If I have to embarrass you every time at a public meeting, I'm going to ask you to stand, because if not, we're going to remove you out of your seat. Thank you.
Polly Leonard.
Chris, can I get as passionate as you did Thursday night? Because I can. All right. So, when it comes to standing, and if you're feeling like you stand alone, you usually have a lot of trolls that like to follow behind you. So, if Charity has any questions, she can feel free to meet me after this. So, here we go. Proclamation, free sovereign American citizen reminder. You guys proclaim some of the funniest stuff, so I'm gonna proclaim today. And when we're done, we'll have a photo op. I'll be happy to have photos with you guys, and we even brought pins, just like Pelosi. Whereas, North Carolina citizens have been held under an oppressive dictator regime since March 2020 as prisoners to their government, and whereas, every citizen deserves to hold and maintain their God-given inalienable rights without fear or threat of retaliation, and whereas, North Carolinians can make all the difference in the lives of their families by taking a stand effective immediately to reclaim their rights and their freedoms. And whereas, under the North Carolina State Constitution, Article 1, Section 1, the equality and rights of the persons we hold to be self-evident, that all persons are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the enjoyment of the fruits of their own labor, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, under the North Carolina State Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, sovereignty of the people, all political power is vested in and derived from the people. All government of right originates from the people, is founded upon their will only, and is instituted solely for the good of the whole, not for you. And whereas, under the North Carolina State Constitution, Article 1, Section 3, internal government of the state, the people of this state have the inherent sole and exclusive right of regulating that internal government and police thereof, and of altering or abolishing their constitution and form of government whenever it may be necessary to their safety and happiness. But every such right shall be exercised in pursuance of law and consistently with the Constitution of the United States. And whereas, under the North Carolina State Constitution, Article 1, Section 5, allegiance to the United States, every citizen of this state owes paramount allegiance to the Constitution and the government of the United States, and no law or ordinance of the state in contravention or subversion thereof can have any binding force. And now, therefore, the citizens of this county hereby proclaim November 9th, 2021, as free sovereign American citizens. From this day forward, we will no longer submit or comply to the ruling elitist class that has circumvented our constitutional rights, and will not wear face coverings nor participate in the clinical experiments being enforced upon us that is in a clear violation of the Nuremberg Code that was established in 1947. We are adopting it this day, 9th day of November, 2021. Remember, remember the 9th of November. We're tired of it, and we're American citizens, and it's way past time for y'all to start acting like it. So, here we are. We're not going away. We're loud and proud, and Charity, if you have any questions, feel free to see me after.
Brandy.
An honor to be in front of you again. Tonight, I'm supposed to be at a school board meeting with Kate Gentry, but Kate Gentry has a mask policy. So, I'm going on record, and I'm stating it's been over 60 days, and my children have still not been allowed to go to school and get a public education. Kate Gentry is a liar. Kate Gentry doesn't have the authority to deny my children and myself any constitutional rights at all. I don't know what can be done, and I don't know what your position is, because I haven't studied county commissioners' roles. I'm a mom. I have an MBA. I'd stay in my lane and handle my business, right? But I don't know. Maybe there's something that the county commissioners can do to oversee a committee that will oversee the school board. There is no governing body, no governing authority that oversees school boards in the state of North Carolina. We have a draconian governor who will not allow legislation to be passed on the highest level in the state of North Carolina. Maybe that's something that you guys can get together and come up with, I don't know. But I just want to put it, I'm stating it again for the record. Kate Gentry is a liar, a liar, a liar. She has lied to my children and denied us our constitutional right to go to school. Our civil liberties are being violated today as we speak. It's segregation. We were done with Jim Crow laws, right? We're being segregated and discriminated against. Who, which one of y'all will hew the ox for my children and send it out to the tribes, to the people, and say, help is on the way? This is siege warfare. This is siege warfare. And I'm asking, if there's anything that you can do, come, pull me aside, email me. Brandy here, we've got a plan. Let's move in this direction. I need some guidance. The state of North Carolina is notorious for saying, we need guidance from the teachers. We need guidance. I need some guidance for my children, please. I pay taxes. I'm a law-abiding person, a citizen, and I'm raising my children to respect authority, in the name of Jesus, to respect authority, but their rights are being violated. So, how do I continue to, to keep asking, you know, implementing into my children to respect authority when they're continuously being violated against? I thank you for your time, and I hope you have a blessed night.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda for discussion?
Motion to approve the consent.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Trul and Commissioner, second Commissioner McClure. Please cast your vote.
Commissioner Trul, could I get your vote, please?
Who?
Commissioner Trul.
Commissioner Trul.
Thank you. Okay. All of the votes are in, and that carries by a vote of 7-0.
Okay. For deliberation, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith for a discussion about the Christmas Parade entry fees.
Madam Chair, a few weeks ago, I think, maybe, and correct me if I'm wrong, you had some concerns about bringing the entry fees getting paid for by the county, the $35 entry fee to enter the Thomasville Parade. I've talked to, you know, other Commissioners, I think probably going to be in the parade. The item's on the agenda tonight for discussion, because during a political season, it can be kind of perceived as using it to, you know, further a campaign. Now, if you're in an honoring event, we have magnets to put on cars. We've had them for years. This fee, these entry fees have not been, have not been part of that for years up until recently. They didn't charge anything. And so, here recently, I said in the last year or two, now, we did pay for some in 2018, probably should have had this conversation then. But the item's on the agenda tonight for the board to, you know, kind of render a decision, help staff out here with, staff wasn't comfortable with processing the fees without approval from the board. So, again, I think in an honoring event, which I can make an argument a parade is, that's what it's for. It's not a political event. And if you read the statute 153, I think it's A99, it says political event. What's the definition of that? Chuck and I tried to find any kind of definition of that around, and I could not find one. Who would render that decision? So, to me, in a parade where you're just in the parade, you've got your car, you've got your name on it, you're in an honoring event, I don't qualify that as a political event, but that wouldn't be up to me to render that decision. I think if you're handing out paraphernalia, you know, from voting, I mean, from your campaign, yes, you probably crossed the line. That's why the item's on the agenda tonight.
Mr. Manager, if I heard you correctly, did you say that, was that the chairwoman that brought this up?
I, I went, because I knew we were in discussions about the parade, and I came up to Mandy. and I came up to Mandy, uh, and I asked her, I said, "Do I, do I need to pay you?" For the, that's how I asked it. Do I need to pay you for the parade? Because as a, as a JC, you know, in my younger years, uh, we ran, we ran the parade, and, and they did, they did charge folks, and I don't, didn't, don't know who all they did charge and who they didn't charge, but they charged, um, people to help pay for the floats in the parade. It's not a money-making business, it's just a bit, you know. So I knew that, so I was willing to, um, pay if I needed to, or to find out whether the county would be paying.
Should I have a couple minutes of time? So, uh, you know, here's the problem that we have. It's a straight 100% disrespect for the board. You know, it used to be up until 2019 that public servants, that elected officials were honored at an event like this because they serve communities. Until we disagree on whether something should stay on Main Street or not, and then we end up infighting towards one another, and the city of Lexington doesn't want a county commissioner to be in a parade, or maybe Thomasville doesn't want this, or, and, and then we, we become infighting, and the next thing you know, hey, listen, we don't want our elected officials in these parades anymore. If we don't watch out, it's the same thing that happens with the school board or anything else right here. We are a governing body. We give all, each one of these municipalities money. We let them have their events, we let them do that. And if we don't take a grab, a hold of the horns, and we, we desire that respect back for this board, it's only going to continue to get worse. And more freedoms are going to be stepped on and trampled on. And it starts with little things like this. I don't mind paying 30 bucks. What's 30 bucks to be in a parade? Matter of fact, I'd just as soon pay it, that way I can throw out candy or whatever I want without somebody saying, "You're trying to politicize your office." But there is a time that we're going to have to stand up and require the respect that this office deserves. And if we're not willing to do that, then somebody else needs to sit in a seat to require that. Because those type of people that require that respect will fight for the citizens. That's all I gotta say, I'm sorry.
The TV last night said that was $50, now it's $30.
50, I don't care for 70, whatever it is, whatever they charge, it's ridiculous.
Here's the deal, this money is being charged by the tourism.
Yeah.
Folks, right, it has nothing to do with the city or with the elected officials or the city of Lexington.
Not every parade. Some parades we're in partnership with, right? It wasn't the, the other parades.
Lexington doesn't charge.
Yeah.
So Thomasville, and again, this just started a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
So for years, we rode around the parades with the magnets on the cars, not a big deal, but, um, with it, with it starting to charge, I think it was a good conversation to have, because what we need is a process going, we're going to be asked to pay every year. And so if, this is, instead of this having to come up all the time, either we're going to have a path to pay or a path not to pay, you know, and everybody just deal with it like Commissioner Elliott.
If Governor Cooper showed up, would they charge him? No. They'd put him right at the front, and they'd march his butt down Main Street.
I, that I don't know.
I'm just being honest with you. If, if Biden showed up, they'd march his butt down Main Street. But if a county commissioner shows up, you gotta pay, you gotta go home. It's messed up, man.
Here's the deal, I think when they come out with that, several of us decided not to go.
There was a kind of a, I won't say a boycott, but it was kind of a, yeah, what we did. Now, last year, the virus wiped the parade out. The year before, I think I rode for Commissioner McClure for, uh, the young lady from the senior services, and I don't recall anybody being in it.
I don't.
I don't think there was.
I'm not sure that we had any commissioners in it in 2019.
Since the fees have been in there outside of that first year, I don't know that anybody's been back.
And again, it ain't really the, the amount of money, it's just the principle.
It is.
Behind it, so, uh.
Because they require you in the parade not to have political stuff. You can't have vote, reelect, you can't have, and you have to be an, you have to be a sitting commissioner or an elected official. You can only have the official, uh, documentation. You can't have any of the, the language or anything, so, I'm like Todd, it's the principle.
I can't really expect or think the taxpayers would really want to pay for us to go to a parade. I don't know, I know it ain't for 50 bucks, but. You want to pay for us to go to a parade? I'm not talking about the school issue, I asked you a question about the, uh, about the parade. But anyhow, I'll do whatever the board wants to do. But again, if I want to go to the parade, I'll pay my own way.
I, I just don't feel disrespected. I'm just proud to be in a, in a parade if I choose to be in one. I appreciate the, the signs that they allow us to put on the cars. I don't, I don't mind paying, I, I think it's a very minor, and I, I, I don't feel like it was done in the spirit of disrespecting an individual. But, you know, I can't say that, but I don't, that's my belief. I don't mind paying at all, but I'll do whatever the board wants to do.
We were told in 2019 when we checked into it as to why we were being charged, after we'd not been ever charged before, that they were doing it across the board, and anyone that wanted to be in the parade was going to have to pay their entrance fee. That went for the Thomasville councilman as well. It was, it was supposedly across the board for everyone.
And yeah, I remember that conversation. But you know, again, we don't pay for Lexington, of course, they don't ask, you know, we don't pay for Denton, or we don't pay for Midway, or.
So I think what Todd said was right. The cities are put on the parades except Comerfield, the tourism puts on the parade, that's, that's the difference.
And I think maybe Lexington puts on the parade tourism.
Up Town Lexington. Yeah, Up Town Lexington.
Right.
Puts on the parade. I, I'm in agreement. I just told them that if they want to charge $35, I just wouldn't be in that parade. Um, I did it a couple of years because I was driving, uh, the Senior Davidson. But whenever I got rid of my Corvette, I don't do Miss Senior Davidson anymore, and I'm not going to pay $35 to be in it, in that parade, and it ain't the $35. You know, I was here whenever they decided they were going to do the, and I asked them, I said, "Why would you charge sitting commissioners or elected officials? Why would you charge them money to be in your parade?" We charge everybody. Well, you can charge this one, because I ain't paying it, and I don't think the county ought to pay it.
Yeah, there's two.
I agree.
I make a motion that we don't have the county pay entrance fee for parading.
I second that motion.
Vote, you need this verbally or what?
Verbally, or? We can vote on this.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you had it in the computer.
No, we don't pay.
That's right, we, we're voting to not pay for entrance fees to the Thomasville Parade.
Yes means no.
Yes means no, yes.
Right.
Yes means the county will not.
The county will not have. And all of those votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
Okay.
And I want to make another comment on that, too. I mean, the chambers, we do fund several of these chambers. I mean, I know it's totally different, but we do give them a little bit of money for buy local and different campaigns.
Buy local a few years ago.
Okay.
We just do the entry fees to be members.
I got you, okay.
All right, we're going to move on to the approval of the MCO-LMA transition, and I'll call on Mr. Smith.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Elliott, I'm doing this from catch-up from the information meeting, too. Um, I think the agenda item sums up kind of what we had at our discussion there. Um, let me recap a couple of things and then put the item on the floor that I think that's going to, if I'm understanding the conversation from Thursday, where we kind of need to finish or tie up some loose ends. So we had a sample agreement on for the, for the Thursday that we walked through, where we did actually save some funds, um, local maintenance of effort funds, uh, that we got with Cardinal and kind of divvied out, figured out what they were going, they were going to Monarch, um, my name's escaping me now, sorry. Monarch and the other one is Chaco.
Arc, Damarc.
Damarc and, um, and Family Services of Davidson County. And then we kind of talked about the Medicaid funds, which again, we agreed priority-wise, and I've got good news on that, I'll get to that in just a second. Um, we talked about moving our meeting dates to both dates to Monday, because we didn't want to have them, one on a Tuesday and one on a Monday, and have mismatched, just move them both to Monday. I think the DSS Board, Commissioner Yates, and Madam Chair is going to come up with a, a new schedule for those meetings as well, because I know it's important for y'all to have them co-aside. Um, seating of the board, we've got three representatives that can, that can serve three-year terms, and that's the key word, can. Um, I talked to Ms. Witt this mo, uh, yesterday morning about this. During the middle of any term or any point in time during that, uh, that can be changed by a vote of this board, so, uh, it's, but it's a max of three years, three-year terms, which would be nine years, obviously, if, if there was no opposition to that. Um, so on the, on the, on the Medicaid funding, we talked about global county-wide priorities, and one of the things that came up was the jail assessments, mental health assessments going into jail, and for DSS. And two other key things, I heard with my ears, and that's why I'm asking, kind of head nods, correct me if I'm wrong, was, um, funding for placements, tough placements, what I call high-level placements, and training for foster care families for some of those placements. If, if I could get those, you know, if those are our four priorities, I think that's probably going to whittle through about whatever Medicaid money would be available in a given year. I talked to Ms. Witt, she is good at working with us, with someone to do these assessments in both locations. So we don't even have to partly talk about this splitting game, we may get two. Um, so what I, and what she was, what she told me was, is we won't be, we won't be, um, looking to them, the staff from Sandhills. We will select somebody via contract, and then they are the provider of the funds. So at some point in time in the future, after December 1st, and we get started with them, it will come back before this board, we will, we'll go out and find some of those folks to, we'll work through the procurement process like we always do, to, to do contracts and arrangement for services. But my point is, it'll come back to you, but remember, the provider of the funds is Sandhills. So I thought that was neat, again, we get maybe both, both parts covered.
Can we get a clarification on the assessor? Now, I, I think we had some discussion the other day about the assessor being located one place or at the other. If I understand it right, we've had an assessor, and it's always, and it's been virtual. Like, uh, Scott said that, that the assessor was in Raleigh somewhere.
We've got the psychiatrist, yeah. Well, I don't, I, I gotta work through kind of with her and you all, what, what exactly that person up there would be doing different from the psychiatrist? Um, because I'm not sure either, but she was good with, if we, I think we talked about somebody that could evaluate, somebody coming into jails, but I see that being a topic on the work session to keep funneling through. But my point is today, she's willing to conversate with us about if we want two people, it's not off the table. It's not, that Sandhills didn't say, "Nope, not, can't do it, forget it, you gotta pick one, and it's got to be this or that." So she, she didn't ask for me to pick that up tonight, that conversation.
It seems like it's a position that's not constantly tied up with the assessor. They got their own business and other entities to deal with, and when you have an occasion where you need, uh, something out of DSS assessed, or something out of the Sheriff's Department, the intensive facilities assessed, then they, I don't see where you'll need half a dozen people or two people.
And I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I don't know until we all kind of sit down and think through this. Um, but that's, that may be a conversation for another day. But she, I was glad to hear she wasn't.
Something I don't know, that's probably.
She didn't say, "No." She didn't say, "Forget it, Casey, you'd have to split time with your, with your folks in child, child protective services, plus trying to, trying to deal with stuff at the jail." So I, to me, that was music to my ears, um.
We're still looking for the number of assessments now.
We are working on that, correct, correct.
I think that's been tested.
We don't have to, we don't have to feel like we got to work through this conversation tonight, just know those are our priority areas. Um, and that's not mentioned in the agreement, because those are fluid, that can move. We can change priorities in midstream, so don't feel like you got to hold those four areas and it's over. So the last thing on the table for tonight was to finish this conversation we started Thursday of the board seats. And what my ears heard was we had, we wanted someone from this board, someone from the Sheriff's Office, Officer Louie, who's been serving, uh, been part of our stakeholder meetings. I think Sheriff's talked with him, and he's okay with that, and as I understand, he's got the clean schedule, eight-five, he's a little more apt to be able to do it. Um, and then Trish Baker, our DSS Director. So really, it's the nomination from this board is what I need as the last piece, and I think we are headed toward our complete transition plan. So I open it up, Madam Chair, that's all I have. If we can have that nomination from this board, I think we're complete.
If that, if the person willing to serve, I nominate Karen.
I appreciate.
Being in with the DSS, I think she has, uh, ties to the foster care and the homes, and she would, she can report back.
Thank you both, I appreciate that. And I wanted to talk to Commissioner McClure and address him as well. Uh, Mr. McClure, you know how much I respect you and, and know of your knowledge of, um, of the LMA/MCO process, and I've had time to think. And the proposal that I, I'd like to say is to thank you for, for nominating me, and I, I'd like to serve, but I'd like for it to be a minimal amount of my time, and I'd love to be involved this, especially this first year of movement into another, you know, another LMA/MCO. Not that I want to do it forever, just like I'm hoping that someone else will take over the board seat with DSS. But I wanted to explain that to you personally, and, and I hope that, that you will okay that as well and not be too upset with me. Um, uh, this new, um, DSS, um, Director, um, Commissioner Yates and I helped to bring in, and we've been real happy with her, and I'd like to be a part of that part of it as well. So thank you for your nominations, both, I would like to serve.
Madam Chair, I'd like a second.
Okay, and thank you for your second as well.
Move the nominations, be closed. Vote by affirmation.
Can we do this one verbally, please? That way we can do the vote on the, and I've got in your documents that it's a resolution. It's the agreement with Sandhills.
Okay, the agreement, okay.
So if we could do this verbally, that would be great.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Ha, ha.
Thank you, any opposed? Since Madam Chair was the, was the, was the subject of the vote.
Thank you.
That motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, now we're moving on to, we removed C.
Ma'am, can we vote on approving the agreement with Sandhills?
Okay, okay.
That is what the formal, the second vote would be.
Do I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement?
So may.
Okay, I've got it, from Commissioner Shores.
Sorry.
And Commissioner McClure, all in favor? Do you want, can we vote on this?
May.
May we vote on this?
You have trained me well on it. That's one thing that Barney never showed me.
Girl, you'd have a full-time job with me, I'm going to tell you right now.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
Question, Casey?
Yes, sir.
Uh, being as how we don't have a one commissioner on there, um, we can attend if we want to, is that correct?
I'll check with Victoria, I don't know why not.
I don't know.
I will find that out for sure, I don't, I don't have any reason why not, but.
Thank you.
Real quick, can I say something? Thank you all for your patience during this time, this past year with this issue. I know it's been tough, um, but you're not the only ones in the state dealing with it, as you know, so, um, we've had a smooth transition, relatively speaking.
Could, could Fred be an alternate if you couldn't make a meeting?
I was just fixing to ask the same question.
I'll find that out, too, I, I have a good idea, I don't know.
Find that out, find that out.
Man, that way they're both involved, yeah.
We have alternates on a lot of the other committees that we have, so.
I will find out.
Okay.
All right, we removed C, so we'll move on to item D. Um, a, a resolution entitled Freedom Against Mask Mandates. Commissioners Elliott and Shores will lead this off.
Yes, um, so I, I'd just like to say that, um, I want to give credit to Dr. Kristen Macasters. She gave a tremendous speech to the Davidson County Republican Party, and she went through, uh, teaching us what Article One, Section Eight was, which is exactly what the powers are, it's the job description of those who sit in Congress. And it absolutely shows what's unconstitutional and what's constitutional, based off the document itself, not opinion, but what our founders created. Through that, me and Commissioner Shores have got together through a lot of prayer and, uh, through a lot of discussion, and I'm going to read the, the resolution. Um, it's a resolution, Freedom Against Vaccine Mandates. It says, "Whereas, the elected office holders in Davidson County, North Carolina, swore an oath to uphold the state constitutions, and whereas, there is no constitutional authority, and there is no constitutional authority in Article One, Section Eight, to restrict individual unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, Davidson County respects the God-given unalienable rights of its citizens to make their own choices concerning them and their children's health care, bodies, and well-being. And whereas, every citizen who wants a COVID-19 vaccine or wants to wear a mask has the right to obtain or wear one. But the Davidson County Board of Commissioners believe that it is an individual's choice, and that no COVID-19 vaccine or face covering should be mandated by state or federal law. Whereas, demanding citizens to divulge their personal medical information invades their protected right to privacy."
and discriminates against them based on their perceived medical status in contradiction of the Americans with Disabilities Act forty-two USC one-two-one-one-two A. And whereas the Board of Davidson County Commissioners are tasked with protecting the employees of Davidson County from unreasonable orders with providing a cooperative and productive working environment. And whereas the Davidson County, uh, should be Board of Commissioners does not have the resources to enforce state and federal vaccine or mask mandates and does not intend to use its very limited resources to enforce any vaccine or mask mandates issued by either state of North Carolina or the United States federal government that violates our constitutional freedom. And would encourage all state and federally elected officials to refuse to require or enforce the same. Now be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Davidson County go on record to oppose vaccination as a condition of employment for county employees and its citizens. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Davidson County declare that it has no intention of using limited county resources to enforce any vaccine or mask mandate. And would encourage all elected officials in the entire state of North Carolina to refuse to require or enforce the same.
A second to motion, Madam Chair.
Have a motion and a second on the table.
Let me just say one thing here. In the third from bottom paragraph, you've got either the state of North Carolina or the United States federal government, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Well, we have the local officials in this county right here, they're associated with the will of the people, not our will. So we need to include that in here as well.
I agree with that, a hundred percent.
To include what language there?
The local elected official.
Amen, yeah.
Cause I mean, it just leaves that out.
I meant any elected official in the state of North Carolina. Yeah, but local municipal, exactly, every one of them.
Madam Clerk, can I amend that on the line here or does that?
If you all direct me to do it, I'll amend it and have.
A part of the motion, I would like to amend it to Commissioner Shale's language.
That's the third paragraph from the bottom.
That is correct.
Okay.
This is not the same.
Yeah, that ain't, this ain't the same what you did earlier.
It's not, it was amended, no, we.
It's a difference.
It is, the Article One, Section Eight language was added. And then information from, um, the Rockingham County, uh, Board of Commissioners that they're adding in their resolution that's gonna be just like this was also added in there.
I sent it out to y'all earlier today.
Yes.
Sent me an email earlier today asking me to amend it. And that's why you'll have, that's why y'all have them at your places, it is different than what's in the agenda packet.
Oh yeah, this is what's at our place here, yeah.
And that's.
That's the old one. I mean, I picked it over going, where's all this at?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I may have, I shouldn't have printed the wrong one.
And in here, when we talk about we don't have the resources, why, I mean, why don't we have resources?
If you think we have the resources to go be the masked police for every citizen of Davidson County, we are very, very confused.
It's not gonna have to be a masked police. It says we don't have the resources.
Have you been watching TV, Commissioner Trowe? Have you seen what, uh, the President's trying to do, what he's trying to push through with this, with this mandate requiring that people have a vaccination for employment? And not only that, but if we don't watch very carefully, if Chuck can speak to this, I think the Commissioners are labeled as employees under this. Because by North Carolina general statute, the Commissioners are county employees. So we would be underneath this mandate, correct?
Well, the mandate that they're pushing, that is in the courts now, it says, uh, uh, it doesn't say anything about, uh, governments or anything, it says, uh, I thought it said, uh.
It says if you receive federal funding or, or, uh, more than one hundred employees, any federal funding contracts through the, uh, to the federal government, you would be required to, to, uh, be vaccinated.
But wasn't that for private companies though, didn't it?
No, sir. Well, that's what they alleged in the beginning. And I think that now through OSHA, OSHA is, is, is pushing that mandate and it's gonna actually extend out to, to more than just private companies. Isn't that correct, Mr. Smith?
If you go on my Facebook page, you can watch Commissioner Josh Dobson.
I don't read Facebook, I don't read Facebook.
Well, Commissioner Dobson, who is our Commissioner of Labor, North Carolina Department of Labor, took over for Cherie Berry. He did a conference call today explaining this. And it's not an easy answer for his office, just to say no. So there's something that is, is coming down the pike and it's unconstitutional.
You know, Madam Clerk, I'm a member of Board of Health too. Board of Health is to uphold the health and welfare of the people of Davidson County, the state, and the government.
Yes, yes, sir.
I can't, I can't, I mean, I'd like to have time to read this, but I vote for it.
We've read it. There's nothing more.
You just gave it to us a while ago, you just gave it to us a while ago.
It's not like reading a book. I just read it to you.
I couldn't hear you the way you were springing over.
Oh yeah, sure. Take notes, Davidson County.
Well, I mean, if Rock, if Rockingham wants it.
Excuse me, Commissioner Elliott.
If Rockingham wants it, let Rockingham.
I'm not the only one mouthing here, Madam Chair.
I, I, no, I think he's, I think he's having a conversation with you and you're having a conversation with the audience, okay? We're having a discussion among ourselves.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What exactly is the position on OSHA and where have they given a deadline that they're gonna enforce this? Or have they made a decision that they're gonna enforce this?
They have not, I do not think.
It's on hold, I think.
I think as of, as of this weekend.
I'm asking the county attorney, county.
Oh, I thought you was asking attorney in fact. I'm able to give some legal advice, but not, you know.
I mean, the federal court's taking injunction against.
Yes, the federal courts have taken injunction.
Supposed to be imposed, Dave, I think.
Yes, and, and there were some responses that were required to be submitted by tonight. I was looking in the, in the press prior to the time that we became into our meeting tonight. And I did not find that those responses have been filed yet. The, the one caveat to this is that I think we need to remember that as it is presently imposed, it is not a vaccine mandate. It is instead a requirement that there either be vaccination or testing. And so it doesn't require that anyone who would be within a covered entity be vaccinated. It does require that you elect either to be vaccinated or tested. And there are other requirements and there's procedures by which that would be carried out. So we, we, I, I just didn't want it to be mischaracterized.
Thank you for that clarification.
Another question. When we first started this trip, we sent a resolution to Raleigh asking that Davidson County be in charge of its own, um, future so far as the, uh, emergency that the governor declared. With him declaring an emergency and it hadn't been lifted, what kind of power does that give the governor so far as the government of the state?
Well, there have been a series of continued emergency declarations that have been entered by the governor since February of twenty twenty. I think that the challenge for this particular concern is that this is not directed by Raleigh as much as this is directed by Washington. And specifically with regard to how it is being treated as an employment matter there. That it is perceived by the federal government that in order to gain some control over the pandemic, there needs to be a combination of testing and vaccination. And they're allowing employers then to set up protocols by which this can occur and allowing employees then the right to determine whether they want to be vaccinated or whether they want to, want to be tested. And so that they can, they can, they can speak to that. Now, there are some individual companies that have elected, there are some individual companies that have elected to have mandates. I saw in the press today that United Airlines, for example, was requiring its employees to be tested. But that's not a federal or state mandate. That is a requirement that's being set up by the employer.
So the reason why I, I brought this up is because right now, if you look at the testing that we can get, a lot of it has been labeled no good. We've, we're having to throw it away because the testing kits per the Department of Defense were not, they were compromised. Whatever that means, they were compromised and we're having to throw them out. So my question to the North Carolina Department of Labor and OSHA was, okay, well, if we have a program like that and ninety-five percent of our employees decide that they're gonna test and we don't have testing kits to test them with, are we violating it? There was no answer, nobody knew. I've asked that not only at the NCAA C conference where the, uh, North Carolina, uh, Division of Public Health was at. And I asked them the same question and nobody had an answer. But we have a mandate that says, you know, hey, you gotta do this, you gotta do this. But the, the key is, it's not constitutional.
That's the bottom line.
And no matter what board, what, where we're at, we swore an oath to protect and uphold that constitution.
In essence, what is it, this, 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 uh, resolution is doing nothing but giving the citizens a choice to make overall.
I see it, sir.
No, it doesn't.
Well, tell us, tell us something.
We don't have control over the citizens. What this resolution does is it says county employees.
It says citizens too.
That's the only thing that we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Whereas every citizen just supporting, it's all we're doing.
Yeah.
We're not mandating that either or.
Here, here's the only thing I see with this, Chris, I mean, I'm, and I'm total for, um, for individual rights. I mean, I hadn't been vaccinated, I don't plan to. I'm for individual rights. But if they come out with a law, this is saying, I mean, this is just a piece of paper. If they come out with a law from Washington, then I don't know what we can do other than let them tote us to jail because this piece of paper ain't gonna stop us.
I'm just saying, they can tote my heavy butt to jail because I'm not gonna do anything against the constitution.
And they can tote me to jail because I'm not gonna take the vaccine. But I'm saying, I don't want people to get a false security just because we got a piece of paper.
And I agree with that, but more so than anything, I guess this lets the people know where we stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would ask that you keep your comments to yourselves and listen to our discussion, if you will. Um, this is not a free for all, this is, and y'all, you all had your, your opportunities to speak and public comment. We listened intently and give us an opportunity to, um, speak as well, okay? Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, Commissioner Yates, just like the, uh, before I was on the board, the, the Second Amendment thing. Right, and that's just a piece of paper, you know, just a piece of paper. And I think, I think everybody here understands that, or I would hope they do. And if not, we can make that very clear that this is a, a resolution and it is only a piece of paper. But it is letting the people that, the hundred sixty-five thousand people in this county know where we as a Board of Commissioners stand, just like we did with the Second Amendment thing. And, and I think that a lot of them have asked us to, to make us, take a stand and, and we're taking that stand. And I know you feel the same way. And I'm gonna tell you what I told, uh, several deputies downstairs after that Second Amendment vote. I said, I hope when the day comes, because it's coming, that they're gonna come and try to take your guns away, okay? It's coming. I said, I hope what y'all just said in that meeting up there, y'all stand behind it, you know? Because again, when they come to take my guns, they'll take them out of my hand, you know?
My cold dead hands.
My cold hands. That's right. So, uh, you know, I just believe my dead fallen career, like I've told you all before, for our rights here and, uh.
Absolutely.
So I agree with that. But again, these, these pieces of paper, like I say, when they come with their M16s or whatever it is to come get your guns, it's a little piece of paper. I'm not saying this one is gonna mean nothing, you know? And like I say, some of these same people that told us they're gonna protect us and not let that happen, you'll probably see them change a little bit. And the same thing will happen with this mask mandate, I mean, not mask, but vaccine mandate if it comes, you know? And like I say, I've been watching this from OSHA for a while. Uh, and, uh, it's totally against what I consider the American rights, you know? So we'll see. But again, I mean, I don't have a problem with some of this. To me, I would have just put on here, it didn't need but one whereas. Whereas we not gonna, uh.
We're not gonna do it.
We not gonna do it.
That's right.
Whereas we not gonna do any vaccine mandate.
Well, and also, I think the title, uh, needs to be, because you have, and the original one that, I, I had to read several times because I didn't, I wasn't sure whether we were talking about vaccines or masks or both, because at the beginning, it just says Freedom Against Vaccine Mandates. It does not address until later on the masks at all. So it seems, you know, that's something that needs to be, uh, changed as well, um.
But I want to make it clear, I don't care who wears masks, if they wanna wear one, they may want to.
That's why the third was in there, listen.
Right, if they wanna get a vaccine, I'm happy for them.
Absolutely. Every citizen who needs that COVID vaccine or that mask can wear it. But you're not gonna tell me I'm forced to.
Right. But again, I'm afraid, and I hope the federal government, I hope this, uh, federal court and it's probably gonna get a Supreme Court for it's over with, or lawyer over here can probably tell us. But, you know, that's where it's gonna end up in.
But if it starts here, if the fire starts here and then we spread it out and we send it to every other county, all hundred counties in North Carolina, and then if, you know, God hope they would get involved and people would start taking a stand, we would see exactly what happened in Virginia happened here in North Carolina. But it's gotta start here.
But you know, every other county's not gonna do this.
No, they're not, no, they're not.
You gotta look at it too. Fifty or sixty percent of the people has taken the vaccine because they believe in it. Independents, Republicans, Democrats, it don't matter.
I have the Moderna first and second. Put that in my body, okay? I've had some health issues since I've done that. I don't want nobody else to be required to do that. I took it, I did it, but, so nobody can say, you're anti-vaccination. No, I'm not, no, I'm not. I'm anti you telling somebody they've got to do it. It's personal choice. And when we take personal choice the way you took freedom, so I agree.
And I hadn't had either one of those, but I've had COVID twenty and COVID twenty-one, okay? I've had it twice.
You've doubly covered.
I, Commissioner, Commissioner Yates, you can't get it but once.
Yeah.
Chris, to, to address your point, you were talking about the young lady, the doctor who, uh, That's right. Was telling us about the constitution or. Yes, sir. There's one part of the constitution that was inserted later on that inserted all those eight. And that was the common welfare clause, and that's why we're suffering from all this mess right now. It's because of the common welfare clause because our crooked, unethical leadership has taken, has taken it and used it as they want. There was large debate, almost to the point of fisticuffs, you know, when that was discussed. And a large number of delegates did not want that inserted into the constitution, but they lost. Because their, their fear was it gave too much power to the federal government. And that's exactly what we're witnessing today. Amen. Exactly. They can do anything they want to do to us and, and put it on the gas of the common welfare of citizens, you know, and, uh, that's, that's what we gotta get a hold of at some point. But I'm in total agreement, don't tell me I gotta take a shot and don't tell me I gotta wear a mask. And I'm not telling you not to wear a mask and I'm not telling you not to take a shot, you know? Uh, it's, it's just got to the point where it's just ridiculous, it's got, just, just stupid. Preach it, brother, I'm gonna pass the plate. I love it, I agree. Some things are necessary, but I decide what's necessary for me and my children. Thank you, Commissioner Shale, amen. I have a question.
No, just a comment. The, um, that whereas every citizen who wants a COVID-19 vaccine or wants to wear a mask has the right, they have the right whether we pass this or not.
That's right.
This, this is solely for Davidson County. And, and we have made the decision already that we are not going to require masks and we are not going to require vaccine. We do not do it now. And that was a decision that we made long ago. So I don't know what exactly the purpose of this is, because.
I think we need to, we need to pass that to every elected official in Davidson County, whether it be here or on another board or in another city or whatever. They need to know that that's where we stand. Now, we stand behind our citizens, we stand behind our employees. But, I mean, here's the deal.
that that's where we stand. Now, we stand behind our citizens. We stand behind our employees. But, I mean, here's the deal. Let's vote. Let's, let's show the county where you stand.
This is, uh, this is a, a difficult thing because you're putting, painting every one of the county commissioners in a box. This is something that we don't do. We have already made the decision that we're not going to do it. So, what does this piece of paper say? Says exactly that. We're not gonna do it. I mean, I don't have any problem. I can vote for it because we've already made that decision.
Madam Chair, I call the question.
No, a motion and a second. You call the question.
Okay. But now, uh, please respect my position on Board of Health. I'm voting against it. And I want you to know that.
One question I have, when Madam Chair brought up the title.
We can change the, we can change the title to add mask to.
And vaccine mandates.
What, what else you gonna change?
Maybe my seat if we keep on going this way.
This says the Board of Commissioners. Is it the majority of the Board of Commissioners? Is it all the Board of Commissioners, part of the Board of Commissioners, or what?
You want us to say Board of Commissioners without Don Trul because I can put that in there?
That's right. You can put that in there, Fred.
I can put that in there.
You're kicking off tonight, but you're doing a good job.
You are too, sir.
You're kicking it off.
Yeah.
You sound like me and Fred last week.
Well, it's the thing about it.
Fight that bet.
The thing what people don't understand, we need to understand why we're here today. We're here today because it now is better to be a good Democrat or a good Republican than it is to be a good citizen. We don't care about being good citizens anymore.
Is this not what this is about?
This is, this is a political thing for you. This is political.
Okay. I've called the question.
What about the matter?
Are we ready to vote?
Okay, so it's my understanding that I will add information in there that Commissioner Trul voted against it, that I'm going to add the freedom against mask and vaccine mandates as the title. And the paragraph, the third paragraph from the bottom will, will include all elected officials. Correct?
Let me ask you real quick about the title. Do, should, instead of saying freedom against the, um, vaccine and mask mandates, should it be, we support the freedom, because it sort of gives the illusion that we're authorizing something that we don't have the power to authorize. What are your thoughts on that?
Support freedom against mask and vaccine mandates?
Yeah. We support every citizen's freedom.
The whole board needs to prove it.
Okay, so we support freedom against vaccine mandates. The, the third, whereas from the bottom, is going to include all local elected officials. And that we will put in, possibly the adopted this the night, day of November by a vote of six to one, with Commissioner Trul voting no?
I wouldn't add this.
I don't think we voted yet.
No, we haven't voted yet. Yeah, we haven't voted yet. And I know the question has been called, but I, I, I think I just, I'm being led to say that I feel like it's interesting for the timing of this. I hate wearing masks. I despise them. At my part-time job, I wear one because it makes some of our customers more comfortable for us to, working behind, um, to, to not wear one, to wear one. So, I do that for them. I don't want my grandchildren to wear masks, but they do because my daughter believes in it. So, I, I, I have to look at it, I was a teacher, and I have to look at it as a teacher and a student and a principal and a janitor and a lunch lady and what they're, they're, what they're, what they've tried to do, and it may not have been the right thing to do, but what they've tried to do is keep these children safe and they've used the toolkit recommendations. And they can't get substitute teachers in there. And the, the principals are having to watch classrooms when teachers are absent. And I didn't like the time when my grandson had to stay out for a whole week because he, he had to be quarantined. Um, I, I think that, I don't necessarily, and I'm, I'm not saying that I agree with the school board. The school board has a task to do and they believe that they're doing what they believe is right. And we may be doing what we believe is right. But, um, I, I don't believe, I, I don't believe in a max vaccine mandate either. I kind of understand the, um, the masks as well, although I don't like to wear them as well. If it helps in a small, small way, and if you'll remember, over the course of time, what, what originally was thought was later changed, and was later changed, and was later changed. And we're seeing the, uh, numbers of sick people go down. That may be due to herd immunity or, or, or vaccines as well. But, uh, these, I, I've been thinking about these resolutions. Um, when we do a resolution on epilepsy or senior services or whatever, what we're doing is bringing to light appreciation. But when we do something like this that's not a law and can't be changed just by making this and just by announcing to the world, um, I question the validity of the resolution. So, you know, I'm, at this moment, I haven't made my decision about how I'm gonna vote. I have, I have conflicting ideas. And I also have, uh, questions about the timing of this as well.
And I would like to go on record as being offended that, that I would be questioned about the timing or the validity of, of looking after the citizens.
I, I didn't say anything about validity, okay? I just, I do have a question about the timing of it, especially in light of, um, of the, um, different discussions that, that, that we're having in our country. And it's like I said, I, I would much rather have peace. Uh, sometimes we have to get angry and, um, take things into our own hand. But remember what a resolution is. It, it is a resolving, um, but if it's about, uh, I want to know, I wanna put you in a box, you know, as,
I believe it's Commissioner.
McClure said, I want to put you in a box. And I want to, uh, erase any other decisions that you have made and threaten change over one resolution. I, I'm rambling. I'm sorry.
Just one question, Chuck.
Sir.
Um, the Board of Commissioners of every county act as an arm of the state government. Isn't that correct?
The authority of the county is as a result of the direction of the general statutes.
We cannot.
We are a body politic and corporate and we are created by state law.
And we cannot do anything that the state of North Carolina doesn't give us authorization to do.
There are certain limited authority which is passed to the counties. We are a Board of, of limited authority, yes.
And it's gonna, and it's gonna get less and less if Washington continues to have their way.
That's right.
I mean, that's where it's coming from, Washington.
Absolutely.
Sure, then.
And I, I would just like to say this, and Karen, I truly understand what you're saying. I really do. But you know what, while we're sitting here, 'cause we don't know, the truth is, I've asked people this, and nobody that I know of, including our health director, has ever shown the citizens that they put pressure on or mandate to wear a mask, the NIH study. No, how many people's read the NIH study on masks?
I have. I have.
Fauci's worked for NIH for fifty years. That's the reason he originally came out against the mask. And then politics got in the way. That's what's happened. And talking about our children, go, go read the NIH study. It started out with surgeons. It started out with nurses, including the P ninety-five masks, and then they took in all the masks. Read the study on our children. With undeveloped respiratory system having to wear a mask, where oxygen depleted four percent and carbon dioxide increased by, by five percent. I mean, just read the study. Don't take my word for nothing. Because you can't trust anything anymore. So, just read the study. But nobody wants to do that. Have we ever been presented with the negative side of, side of wearing a mask? No. It's always the CDC's policies as directed by the elected officials in Washington. And people shake their head and say, well, no. Well, read it. Don't take my word for nothing. Read it.
I go along with what, what the resolution says and what our present practice is. It's my decision.
Absolutely, it is.
Madam Clark, on the, on this, on this resolution, why not say the undersigned elected officials? And let everybody sign it that wants to sign it and the ones that don't wanna sign it, don't sign it.
I'm fine with that.
And then that, that takes everybody off the hook. That, that you can sign it or you don't sign it. But instead of saying that old office holds, the undersigned office holds.
So, you have to make those corrections, Debbie, I guess, and we'll be,
Oh, we're gonna have to write the whole thing over again anyway. It looks like.
Then we'll sign it next meeting. Or we can call a special meeting, or we can come by and sign up one by one, any, any of that. But we've done that before where, uh, every commissioner had to sign.
We still have to vote on this because it's, there's a question.
No, it, it, if you approve what he said, you don't have to vote because you're gonna vote whenever you sign your signature.
The reason, and the reason I say that, it's kind of hard to put her in a position there. She says she hasn't made up her mind, but she'd have to sign this thing.
You wanna clarify that, Chuck? Is that correct, or?
All y'all have to do is vote it down. Just vote it down. If you don't wanna do it, vote it down.
You said it was okay with you if everybody signed it.
That's right. Get your pen out.
I'm not sure now if the intent of the motion is to have a resolution from the board or if it's to instead have a statement which would be signed by specific commissioners if they elected to sign. It sounds as if that it, it's no longer a board resolution, but rather a statement of individuals.
I would assume it be a board resolution that we vote on.
That's the motion that's before the board.
That's the motion.
And at this point, and, and the second is for that. And so, absent, and, and agreement to amend the motion, then it would stick with the resolution as it was originally proposed with the several amendments that had been made to the clerk.
That's correct.
I got one quick question for you. And, and here's the issue I got, just like I brought it up earlier. And I know you called a question, but I think good debate's okay and good discussion. But, and if y'all okay with that. If not, then I wanted to ask Chuck a question. If OSHA mandates this and they lose in the federal court, this part that says resources, any of our resources, what will that mean to us? I mean, what will be our option at that point in time?
And that's part of the challenge of a resolution. Um, as the chair was speaking to earlier, with a resolution, we typically expect that it is going to direct certain action to take place and that that action would be specified by the board. There are other times, however, when the board adopts a resolution simply to indicate its opinion with regard to a particular item. At this point, it seems as if the language that's before the board for consideration is speaking to opinion rather than to direction. Because if such an oper, if such a time should ever come, I think it's gonna require some specificity on the part of the board to direct what it's for. Commissioner Watford, the first Commissioner Watford, used to speak with regard to his opposition to what he called feel-good resolutions. And there were resolutions that were done from his perspective for no purpose other than to give a sense of feeling good to certain people. And without some directive on it, if, if Sam were with us this evening, he would say that this is a feel-good resolution. Excuse me, Madam Chair, but I,
Thank you. You were quite accurate.
That's your opinion though, right?
Well, I, I would just be quoting,
Personal opinion, not, not,
Not with, not with regard to the directive between the difference between a resolution which speaks to opinion and a resolution which directs specific action. And Commissioner Yates, and responding directly to your question, let me circle back to that. It is not,
Don't use that term.
It is, excuse me, sir.
We're forbidden to say circle back.
It, it is not apparent from the language here what, what would be required of the county.
Okay. Madam Chair, I,
If it helps you at all, we did get the rules for this. Late in the game, Commissioner Elliott's risk manager in Marquinhem, he may have seen them as well. And we're gonna have a call with Commissioner Dobson, all one hundred counties, um, I guess tomorrow. But until we got the rules, we had no idea what will be the requirement for testing. If you say, say if you have half your workforce that, you know, are, are not gonna be vaccinated and, and choose not to be, what are you going to be, have to do as the employer? Well, it's through those rules, it appears as if you have a choice. I guess if you wanna be, if you wanna pay for those tests, you can. You can put that burden on the employee. That is a choice. So, but again, the court striking it down, at least for the, at least for the short term, um, is a win in the sense of, I think it buys time. It buys time till it goes to the, it is, I, I agree with you. It's headed to the Supreme Court is where it's headed. Um, and we just won't know until I,
Because I read one of the penalties is seven hundred and fifty thousand bucks.
It can be very stout, right. It can be very stout.
Very expensive.
And the reason I ask that question, Chris, I mean, I know if this thing passes or goes through the Supreme Court, that call's gonna be on us, or we're gonna pay the seven hundred and fifty thousand bucks or,
Well, that's per incident. The, the, the definition of per incident is not clear to me either. Is it a roster list of five hundred misses times seven hundred? Or is it one time? Or is it re, you know, I'm coming back every time? I don't know.
I thought it was fourteen thousand per person.
They added more, they added more room to, to up it so they could get your attention.
So, I've got,
And with that, that level of dollar amount, they, they probably did get a lot of folks' attention.
So, just remember, if it passes and it comes back up in front of us again, there's where the real show starts, you know?
And Commissioner Yates, many of the resolutions that's been passed by this board has had the same language in it that said that we would not set forth, I know the Second Amendment one said that we would not use any county resources to take any money.
And that's what I said then. I hope when the show comes,
So, I, I don't feel like this resolution is any different from any of those. We're just simply showing the citizens that, that, that we disagree,
For individual rights.
And that we are for individual rights.
Individual rights.
And there's no difference if six of us signs it and one don't, or six of us votes for it and one don't. There's no difference.
That's right.
So,
So, I, I guess what we need to do is, we need to vote. Is, uh, make, make the motion, uh, subject to the amendments that have been mentioned. Is that right, Debbie? Is that what you, you think?
Changing the title to we support freedom against mask and vaccine mandates.
That's your motion, Commissioner Elliott?
You just, you say, if you're gonna do that, you vote only on the amendment. And then you vote on the motion.
Oh, unless it's the person that made the amendment.
Oh, wait, I thought that'd be the side of,
Made the motion.
Yeah.
If it's the person, is that correct, Chuck?
You make the motion,
If the person that making the, the, the amendment, making the motion amends his motion, then the, the whole thing can go forward, correct, Chuck?
If the motion or the proposed amendments to the motion or the resolution, excuse me, have been accepted by the movement, and they've also been approved by the party that seconded that, then the resolution can go forward containing those amendments as a single, as a single entity.
Correct.
So, we're, we're good with that. So, we're ready to vote.
So, the two amendments that I'm hearing are, the third from the bottom paragraph, we're putting all local elected officials. We're inserting that into that paragraph and changing the title to we support freedom against mask and vaccine mandate.
That's correct.
Those are the two friendly amendments that have been made.
That's correct.
See, I got a question here. Can you really put all local elected officials or just the Davidson County Board of Commissioners? Because there's a whole lot of other elected officials around.
We're just asking them to protect the Constitution.
Oh, okay.
We're just, yeah.
All right. I got you there. All right, we made the roll. Let's move on.
Madam Clerk?
We've got the motion and the second.
Yes.
You all can vote. Commissioner Trew, I've not had your vote come through yet, sir.
Excuse me, Deb.
And of course, your clicker's not gonna work this time.
There it is.
Okay, hold on.
Okay.
Now that. Never used that button.
Okay. And that motion carries by a vote of five to two.
Sorry, I was in another world. Let's move on to public hearing. Our first request is by Titus Ty singer in Emmons Township. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook is coming forward, and when he gets ready, he will introduce the application.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, fellow commissioners. Um, our first item on the agenda tonight under public hearings is old business, um, Mr. Titus Ty Singer. Um, Mr. Ty Singer made a request to, uh, had a request by Titus Ty Singer to rezon property in Emmons Township, tax map twenty-two, lot thirty-four, containing seven point five-six acres more or less. Said property is located on the south side of Reagan Road, approximately seven hundred ninety-three feet east of the Frank Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RS Low Intensity Residential District to that of RA1 Rural Agricultural District. Very briefly, Mr. Ty Singer made this application. We, as staff, supported the application and prepared it, moved it on to the planning board. After the planning board voted to, to recommend approval, we received information that there were deed restrictions on his property that would restrict him from having a double-wide manufactured home, which is what he wanted to do. Our office reached out to Mr. Ty Singer to see if he wanted to proceed forward unsuccessfully, probably a dozen times. Um, lo and behold, Mr. Ty Singer came tonight, and I was able to speak with him. And, and he, after talking with him, he's fine with us denying the request tonight. He, he was under the impression he could not farm his property without this rezoning. We're ish, we, we reassured him that he could, so he, he's no longer here. So, um, to save time, obviously you have to ask if there's anybody in the, in the crowd tonight, but, um, we're, we're prepared to recommend denial of the request. And, and let me make this clear, we're not responsible for deed restrictions. I've read deed restrictions that aren't legally enforceable. But in lieu of the situation and his, um, agreement that he does, no longer wants to put a double-wide on the property, that, um, we recommend denial.
So do I need to open it up to the audience if there's anyone here that would like to speak either in favor of or-
Since it's a public hearing, I think you have to.
Okay, okay. Anyone in the audience wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request? Hearing none? I declare the public hearing closed.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to concur with our zoning official-
Okay.
And deny this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Mr. McClure and Yates.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. Shell.
You don't have mine?
I do. You voted no.
That's the deny, right?
Well, no, you're, no. A yes on this-
Yes means no today.
Yes means no.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clear, I'm gonna clear, I'm gonna clear you, okay, now you can vote.
The motion is deny.
The motion is deny, deny, so yes is no. You got, you did no again.
You're gonna no again?
That's his button, I'm telling you.
I've seen him this time, he didn't know.
He did no?
No, he didn't, yes.
No, he did.
Okay.
Did it come up yes?
It, no, it came up no.
Oh, it is his button then.
It is the button, 'cause I made yes.
Okay, so it is a yes.
He must have Dawn's button.
You switched.
Commissioner, Commissioner Yates, Yates still said no.
I hit yes just as big as I know how to-
Okay, well, I'm gonna ma- I'm gonna turn it into a yes then.
Unless Dawn's done switched the yay and the wha- now you're holding my button up.
He might have done that.
We, we will have to, there's, Mr. Yates, I don't have your vote. I got your second.
All right, come on now. New clickers.
All of, all of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
All right, moving on to a rezoning request by Justin and Whitney Samuel in Conrad Hill Township. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a request by Justy, Justin and Whitney Samuel to rezon property in Conrad Hill Township, tax map thirty-four A, lot fifty, containing point nine-eight acre more or less. Said property is located on the south side of US Highway sixty-four, uh, approximately point four-eight mile west of the South NC Highway one oh nine intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of HC Highway Commercial District to that of RA3 Rural Agricultural District. This property was rezoned, I think, back in two thousand and eleven for a boat dealership. That, um, that project never materialized and the property was sold to, and now the, the folks that live next door, the Samuels, um, they live in the residence directly to the east, and they have purchased this property and wish to sell it as residential property, and they're having difficulties with the bank because it's zoned HC.
I mean, this is downzoning. I don't see in it-
Correct, yes, sir.
Pretty easy.
Yes, sir.
Agreed.
That was our opinion as well.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to, um-
Mr. Crook, is there anyone here tonight for this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the public here.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to either speak in favor of or in opposition?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
If there's anything else you'd like to add, please feel free to.
Yes, just adding that, um, th- they are trying to sell the properties together, and, um, the appraisal has-
And could I have your name?
It's Christie Aguilar.
You're, you're the Realtor, correct?
Yes. Yes. Um, so the appraiser has required to, for loan approval for both of the properties to be zoned residential.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you, thank you. And, Mr. Crook, what's the staff recommendation?
Um, I submit, I would like to tender my resigna- uh, resignation.
No!
That's a no.
After, after deny. You know, it, it's, it's funny when-
Who you been talking to?
It's funny when you come up here and planning and zoning is one of the least controversial items on the agenda. But I would like, I would like to, yeah, thank you. I'd like to tender my staff recommendation is for the record, to get it right. Um, and basically, in summary, it, it speaks to the property where it's located, and we do recognize that sixty-four is a economic development corridor, but this general area right around this property is principally all residential. You can't really see any commercial development. And there's a lot of language in the, the Davidson County Land Development Plan that speaks to minimizing strip development. So the plan supports it, and staff would recommend approval of rezoning it from HC to RA3.
Mr. Crook, you also have a resolution on statement of consistency?
We do, yes, sir. And we ask that you adopt that with it, please.
I'll adopt and make a motion for both.
Second. Thank you, thank you.
Just for clarification, that motion is to approve.
Approve, yes, ma'am.
All of the votes are in, and it worked like a charm that time, Commissioner Shell. I have no idea.
I'll let it cool down.
Okay, that's what it is. If, that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, thank you for the support on my Freudian slip as well.
I was wondering who's gonna do the tours, huh?
All right, next we have a rezoning request by Sheila Shawn Smith Young in Abbott's Creek Township. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we have a request by Sheila Shawn Smith Young to rezon property in Abbott's Creek Township, tax map twenty-three, lot twelve A, and a portion of lot twelve D containing four point five-one acres more or less. Said property is located on the south side of Shady Grove Church Road, approximately three hundred and twenty-five feet east of the Friendship Ledford Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RC Rural Commercial District to that of RA3 Rural Commercial, uh, Rural Agricultural District. Um, this property, for those folks that are familiar with it, this is the, the automobile service center located at the intersection of Shady Grove and Friendship Ledford Road. That shop's been there in business probably since the fifties. Um, so when this part of Davidson County was zoned back in the early seventies, they placed an RC designation on this. They went outside, th- this was all at one time a single property, and over the years, it's been subdivided, and now there are residential uses, um, on the property that's being requested to be changed tonight. Um, so we're, we're, um, the, if this vote takes place tonight and you approve it, the existing automobile repair facility will still be zoned RC, but the house, the pool, the pasture, everything that's outside of that will go to RA, uh, RA3.
Sounds good to me.
Would ask anyone who is here in support of the, the Young rezoning application to come forward, please. Is anybody here? Please come to the podium and add anything you, uh, wish- No, that's fine, that's fine. Staff recommendation would be to, um, rezon the property and the, adopt the statement of consistency, please.
I declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion and a second to approve or deny? Commissioner Shores, uh, may-
This is to adopt, but to approve the rezoning.
Yes.
But the statement of consistency.
Motion. Please cast your vote.
Madam Chair, I have your vote, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
All right, our next item is a rezoning request by Hurdle Land Development in Arcadia Township. I declare the public hearing open.
All right, our last rezoning, public hearing tonight is a request by Hurdle Land Development to rezon property in Arcadia Township, tax map eleven, a portion of lot thirty-two containing point nine-six acre more or less. Said property is located directly south of the Pelican Lane and Mallard Landing Boulevard intersection at one eighty-two Mallard Landing Boulevard. Rezoning is requested to change from that of CS Community Shopping District to that of MXR Mixed Use Residential District. This property was rezoned by Ms. Judy Hartman back in, I'm wanting to say two thousand and six or something like that. I think it's in my staff recommendation. And what, what Ms. Hartman wanted to do, if you please direct your attention to the board, she had, she built a, uh, assisted living facility right here, and everything around this was supposed to be zoned R, RCS for support services for the assisted living facility. Well, that development really never took place. Also, she also plotted in, uh, the property, uh, to the east was rezoned to PDO and I, which no longer exists in our ordinance. We have some regulations that an MXR district has to be at least ten acres to be requested. There's also some ra- some language in the ordinance that speaks to our old existing PD districts. In two thousand and eleven, we rewrote the ordinance. We did away with the old planned development districts, and we adopted the new MXR districts to take their place. So, because this is, this would be substandard on its own, and we could not recommend approval, tonight's action, if approved, would basically be like expanding the existing PDO and I. We do have, uh, language in the application from the president of the Estates at Mallard Landing, um, which is the board that has agreed to accept these two lots into the, the Mallard Landing community. So Mr. Hurdle has to agree to all the conditions and rules of Mallard Landing. These lots will be developed just like the, the lots at Mallard Landing are, are, uh, developed currently. And if Mr. Hurdle would like to come up and, and, uh, is Mr. Hurdle in the audience? Is anyone in the audience? Pardon?
I'm Brian Siafani, I'm the CFO of Hurdle Land Development.
I'm sorry, say your name again?
Brian Siafani.
Okay.
Do good, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I don't have anything to add.
Oh.
Mr. Hurdle agrees that this will be developed just like-
Just, just the way that we've planned it so far.
Okay, all right, very good.
All right, thanks.
Staff has submitted a staff recommendation, would like to, uh, make that part of the record. And basically, it, it recommends approval based on the factors that we've already talked about. We would recommend approval.
Putting a couple more houses in, is that what we're doing?
You're, you're basically gonna add two more, uh, two more lots of record. You're gonna rezon the rear portion of a three-point, a little over three-acre tract to MXR, and it will mirror the existing PDO and I development.
All right, you've got us, you have given us the recommendation for their discussion to clear the pa- public hearing closed. May I have a motion and a second to approve or deny the rezoning request?
I have a motion.
Okay, and to adopt the resolution on statement of consistency?
Second.
Okay, that's, Mr. Mc-
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Mr. McClure, and Mr. Shell was, uh, second. Please cast your vote.
I really just wanna see if the yes works.
I'm sorry, I'm- I hit my second, Debbie, so if I did, Shell got me first.
You were too good.
No, I'm good.
Commissioner McClure, I got your second, and I'm like, oh, I got your motion too, awesome.
You done both?
Your, your yes button is working again, it just had to fit on that one. All of the votes are in.
All my votes.
And that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
I'm making motions and seconding in there.
Technology's good until it doesn't-
I didn't second, please, sir.
According to her machine, you did.
Okay, Mr. Leonard is going to work with us on the road name change for Embler Cemetery Road.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. A month ago, we came before you with a petition to change a road name in the Conrad Hill Township when one ordinance allows a person, a property owner, to petition their road to be changed, the name of which, as long as they get fifty-one percent of the property owners with road frontage to sign a petition. Uh, Ms. Barbara Ripple had produced a petition that, uh, included six out of the nine properties that were along Embler Cemetery Road. Um, at the time, we asked the board to postpone this for a month so that we could do some additional advertising, since which we posted this in the courthouse, we posted in Skipper's Restaurant, and Gordon's Convenience Store, and reposted the property, uh, which was a general statute that we, we followed. Today, this morning, I received a, a letter, or by email, from Connie Albertson. If I could have a pointer on it. Yes, sir. From Mike and Connie Albertson, who own these two tracks right here, requesting that their name be withdrawn from the petition. This afternoon, I received an email from Mr. Raymond Giglio asking for his name to be withdrawn from the petition, which brought the number to four out of nine, which dropped the petition under the fifty-one percent requirement. I know we have a lot of people here tonight. It is a public hearing, but because of the now ineligibility of the petition, I would ask the board to deny the request. But it is a public hearing, so ever how the board wishes to pursue, uh, with this tonight.
Is it mandatory fifty-one percent for passage?
It's fif- mandatory for it to even come before you.
So what do we do?
Uh, it's, it's, it's really a, a dead issue, but I don't wanna, but because we've already advertised it, I would prefer a vote of denial, just so there's some, um, uh-
Can I make a motion with deny?
Second.
Got three seconds, oh.
Okay.
Our county attorney wants to give us-
I agree.
No, I, I, I don't wanna belabor the point, but in response to Commissioner Shell's question, there are two applicable portions of law. One is under GS one fifty-three A dash two thirty-nine point one. It does not specifically require the fifty percent- It does not specifically require the 50% plus one vote, but that language is contained within the ordinance that has been adopted by Davidson County that specifies how a petition has to be brought forward. It's a prerequisite for a petition to be brought, that you have to have that 50% plus one in order, and so at this time, it appears as if that preliminary step fails.
Do, could we ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to say?
Don't make any difference.
Does it make, it doesn't make any difference, does it?
It does not make a difference. I wonder, however, as a courtesy to people that are here...
Yes.
If you indicate that this is going to fail, and that there's nothing else to be heard.
Done. And then they can, at that point in time, make the decision as to whether they want to come up and speak? We'll leave it at that, okay? Is there anyone wish to come up and speak? Okay, thank you. At least we afforded the opportunity, yes.
We're all opposed.
Thank you. So...
Motion.
We've already gotten...
I've got vice chair here, as the motion, and Commissioner McClure as the second?
As the second, yes.
My vote.
So let's...
To deny.
To deny.
We're not real clear tonight, are we, Debbie?
Yeah.
Phew.
So a yes is to deny.
A yes is a no again.
All of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote of 7-0.
I'll make a motion for closed session if...
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner, yes, and Commissioner Shores.
If I showed you.
If I may, before you leave, while the commissioners go into closed...